On to unfinished business, Plan Dana Point, our general plan visioning framework. All right, Ms. Dynas.
Thank you, Mayor Frost. Good evening, City Council and members of the public. My name is Belinda Dynas, Principal Planner and Project Manager for the Dana Point General Plan Update. I am pleased to present to you the draft visioning framework and summary of engagement efforts for Plan Dana Point. We are nearing the end of Phase One Visioning for the General Plan Update. Our consultants Diane Bathgate and Elizabeth Ocampo-Vivero from RRM Design Group are here tonight to provide you with a full presentation with a quick overview of the visioning process, discuss the draft vision and guiding principles, and highlight key points that are intended to facilitate plan development for the upcoming Phase Two. Last week, on July 10th, the Planning Commission provided recommendations as highlighted in the Agenda Report. For your consideration, City Staff has drafted a revised vision statement based on the input received from Planning Commission. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Diane for the presentation. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Belinda, and good evening, Mayor Frost, and members of the City Council. We're really excited to be here tonight at the culmination of the visiting phase of the General Plan Update. And next slide. We just wanted to identify where we're at in the process, present Plan Dana Point documents. There's two primary documents, the summary of engagement efforts, and also the visioning framework. We want to share highlights of what we've heard briefly, and then also touch on next steps. And where we're at in the process is right at the end of the visioning phase. Tonight will be part of that. We also have another step to do, to prepare a video that will capture a lot of the engagement efforts and some of the feedback that we received. But the visioning effort really was to introduce the General Plan Update, create awareness, capture community inputs, identify issues and values, and really to inform the second phase, which is the actual General Plan Update and development of the plan. So Phase Two will be conducted over the next two years approximately. You'll hear a little bit more about that process later tonight. And then, of course, implementation of the General Plan is, over the course of time, 20-plus years or more. There's near-term and longer-term aspects. So the visioning phase is, I know we saw your faces at a lot of these events. It was a mixture of in-person and virtual events. It was conducted over the last many months. It was launched in February this year. It had project branding, study sessions, interactive map. We had a community workshop early on in March, various study sessions, an online questionnaire. We had an initial video of what is a general plan, which was very popular and kind of the heart of our outreach was several pop-up events where we really went out into the community and gathered feedback where folks were. So I wanted to touch on just a few slides of some of the events. The Community Visioning Workshop held on March 8th was at the Dana Point Community House. And we had a good turnout for that to kick off the process. We had nine pop-up outreach events. And then our community open house was more recent, on June 29th, where we presented what we'd heard and introduced also the upcoming stages. Our YouTube playlist had over 1,000 views, and that included a video of when the City Council initiated the work effort, also what is the Dana Point General Plan video, and also a workshop of our first community visioning workshop. The Dana Point, Plan Dana Point website has had over 2,000 visits, and we've had many sign-ups for this process, which will be rolled into the subsequent phases as well. The online questionnaire had 238 participants. That's really resulted in over 3,500 data points that we collected. We had an interactive map and also meetings with boards and commissions throughout the process. And over these last few months, over 8,000 data points have been collected through various online and in-person events. So fairly robust. So there are two documents available right now as a culmination of this process. There's the draft summary of engagement efforts, and there's the draft visioning framework. And the draft summary of engagement efforts, we wanted to have a comprehensive and transparent compilation of all the feedback that we received during the process. It also describes the community engagement program and the details of all of the events that were conducted. All of the information we collected was digitized, so it's easy to search on that document. So it can help inform the next phase. And it also informed the draft visioning framework, where we summarized all the engagement efforts, and then we read through it, we synthesized it, and that resulted in the draft visioning framework. And the visioning framework, it organizes the feedback by topic, by general plan topic generally, and it also draws up the information into these guiding principles, which are guideposts for the General Plan Update. And then on the top is the vision statement, which kind of came last out of that process. So at this time, I was going to introduce Elizabeth to share a little bit more about these two documents, and I'll be back after that.
Thank you, Diane. The Summary of Engagement Efforts document is organized in seven sections, which capture the different components of the community engagement program conducted as part of the visioning phase of the General Plan Update. The first two sections are Community Engagement Program and Communications Plan. And the rest of the sections include meetings with boards and commissions, stakeholder meetings, community meetings, as well as pop-up outreach events and online activities. The full document is available for review on the project website. Today, we're sharing with you a few sections to introduce the structure of the document. The Online Activities section of the Summary of Engagement Efforts includes the results from the online questionnaire and interactive map. The document captures the 238 responses to each of the questions included in the online questionnaire, and the responses are categorized and displayed by topic in tables and graphs. The document also captures the 127 comments received through the interactive map, which were sorted by topic and displayed on maps that were complemented with tables containing all the responses. The Pop-Up Outreach section of the Summary of Engagement Efforts document describes the series of events conducted to gather input from community members, such as the Festival of the Whales, redo market, among others. This section documents the activities that were utilized at each event, as well as serves as a compilation of the 675 responses received. The Community Meeting section of the Summary of Engagement Efforts documents the Community Visioning Workshop, which took place in March, in which the community provided comments by general plan element in an interactive format. This section also includes the Community Open House, which took place on June 29th, and was an opportunity to share with the community what we've heard so far and collect thoughts from them regarding the guiding principles and key themes that we've identified throughout the process. The Visioning Framework document includes 11 sections. The first two sections are Introduction and Purpose, Draft Vision Statement, and Guiding Principles. The rest of the document includes key topics and themes identified through the visioning phase grouped into the General Plan Element categories: Land Use, Urban Design, Housing, Circulation, Noise, Public Safety, Conservation and Open Space, Public Facilities, and Economic Development. After the Introduction and Purpose section, the Visioning Framework document includes a draft vision statement and guiding principles that capture at a high level the community's feedback received through the visioning phase. We will go into more detail about these as the presentation continues. The Visioning Framework document provides an overview of the main topics and associated themes heard throughout the visioning phase, which are organized according to the General Plan Element categories. Each of these sections includes an introduction that provides context regarding the current general plan and highlights from what we've heard. It also groups the themes that reflect the comments received and organizes them by topic. This section includes quotes that illustrate the types of comments that we received. I now hand it off back to Diane, who will go over each of the General Plan Element categories.
Thank you, Elizabeth. So these next few slides are just some highlights. We wanted to give a flavor of some of the feedback that was provided and how it was distilled into the visioning framework. You find sometimes crossover between topics, and that's natural with general plans. There's a lot of interrelationships. So wanted to point that out as we go through it. For land use, there were quite a few comments relating to the bulk and scale and uses for new development. Also, developing strategies to reposition retail and office commercial centers over time, keep those updated to be responsive to the economics of the area. For urban design, there was a priority on beautification, streetscape enhancements, and incorporation of community neighborhoods serving open spaces, and overall having context-sensitive building design and site planning strategies. For housing, even though the city recently updated the housing element, which is required to be updated every eight years, so there might not be a heavy revision to the housing element in the upcoming General Plan Update, but there were quite a few comments making sure that housing within Dana Point accommodates needs of families, seniors, middle-income households, and disabled persons, to have a full range of opportunities to address needs. Also to retain the character and amenities of single-family residential neighborhoods, we heard that quite often, too. For circulation, improving connections for walking and bicycling to key destinations such as the beach, town center, and the harbor were mentioned. Also, of course, continuing to ensure safe and efficient vehicular circulation was a priority. For noise, while many participant responses indicated that noise is not a substantial issue, traffic and street noise was clearly the most frequently noted noise concern in Dana Point. We even received some positive comments, like the sound of sea lions in the evening from the harbor. So that was kind of nice. Public safety is an important theme in Dana Point. The community feedback emphasized protection of beaches and coastal bluffs and citizen education and emergency preparedness. Conservation of open space combines two different topics as required under state law. It looks at the natural resources and open space areas, as well as focuses on future parkland and recreational facilities. And community feedback highlights include expanding recreation access and opportunities, stewardship of natural resources, and of course, mitigating coastal challenges. For public facilities, we, community feedback highlights include undergrounding of utilities. That was, I think there's a contingency out there that that's their number-one priority. So we heard a lot about that. Ensuring adequate utilities and services, expanding cultural and educational opportunities, and supporting sustainable approaches to service delivery and improvements. Comments were also received on a variety of public facilities, including parks, public structures, and community and cultural arts facilities. For economic development, some of the key highlights include building upon economic assets such as the coastal setting, natural beauty, beach accessibility, being close to the freeway, and addressing some of the costs of doing business in general. And also, a recurrent theme is really supporting small businesses in Dana Point and also providing for a variety of business opportunities. So these are some of the highlights of comments by general plan topic. And now we're shifting gears to discuss the draft guiding principles, which kind of bring it up to, distill it to even a higher level of key themes. And I won't read the guiding principles, but they're generally in the topics of public spaces, land use and context, public safety, recreation, tourism, arts and culture, innovation, natural resources and conservation. And we have one edit to the tourism guiding principle. We had some feedback from the Planning Commission on July 10th, which suggested the words "benefit from" instead of "leverage," tourism in a way that supports the local economy, et cetera. And the last three guiding principles address civic engagement, economic vitality, and mobility and connectivity. We also presented a draft vision statement to the Planning Commission, and they had some suggestions and feedback. So a revised vision statement has been drafted based on that feedback from the July 10th meeting. And the revised vision statement is on the screen here for your consideration tonight. It's been revised by City Staff to incorporate these changes. And it reads, "Dana Point is a coastal community that sets a standard as a vibrant world-class place. Our vision is a city rooted in a strong sense of community with a connection to the ocean that celebrates our heritage and cultural diversity. We envision a city with responsible development, public safety, a healthy economy, and environmental stewardship, ensuring that Dana Point remains a coastal haven for residents and visitors." That was a common theme, having a healthy Dana Point for both visitors and residents, like making sure that, optimizing that combination where we can. So for next steps, tonight we have the final study session on the culmination of the visioning process. And there's also a request for proposal to initiate this Phase Two portion of the General Plan Update. And we'll also be preparing a vision for Dana Point, which will capture a lot of the outreach efforts that we conducted over the last several months. And then, of course, Phase Two Plan Development will be conducted over the next two years. So tonight, we suggest soliciting any public input and comments that folks would like to share, and also to provide any feedback that you may have on these two draft documents and on the process. And the action is to receive and file the documents for tonight. Available for any questions or comments?
No, thank you. Fantastic presentation. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comments?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so just City Council comments, questions? None? Councilman? All right, well, I won't leave you hanging. I'll give, actually, if, I guess it doesn't matter, or maybe you guys can tag-team it. Curious. And I'm asking you off the cuff, but after reviewing everything, I have my own ideas. After reviewing everything, what were the, what's the most common theme that you think you received the most sort of contrary direction from? That when we go to implement this or identify a direction to go that, oh, yeah, exactly. Can I ask you off the top of your head?
No, that's a good question, and I think that that's something to sort out more during the General Plan Update. But there are differing views on like the level and type of future development in Dana Point, which you guys probably can already feel with different proposals that might come forward. So it's finding that sweet spot, and what are the policies that are in play to make sure that change can happen over time, but it's shaped in a way that benefits the community? So I think that's, I think, something that will still have to be navigated through the next part of the process.
Brenda, any thoughts from everything you read, or Belinda, I apologize?
No, I was thinking exactly what Diane was thinking, and I thought that was kind of the biggest challenge, is finding that balance within our community, allowing for change, but doing it in a way that's going to be acceptable to our future.
I agree, I agree. Who can argue with nicely well-maintained streetscapes? Everybody wants that. But yes, okay. Any other, oh, Councilmember Pagano?
Just one question. In reference to the interviews and the stuff that you did, the pop-ups and stuff, did you guys get a feel, or did you ask anybody just to kind of calibrate comments? I guess I'm leading the witness a little bit, but in my mind is, the answers will probably differ based off how long they've been residents in the town. Did you guys get a feel for a general feel for the respondents as far as?
Yeah, you know, it was across the board. I think folks that have been here a long time, sometimes are more invested in like things staying the way they are, but I think also sometimes they've seen a lot of change that they like. Or it just varies. It just depends on the individual, I think.
Yes, because it's funny, you asked about the conflicting, or things that were opposing. For sure, I could pick up on the development. And you talk to 10 people, you're going to get 10 different answers on that stuff. But you put, there's something out there that, I don't know if it was wordsmith this way, but to me it was, it said something about preservation of our, and I'm going to mess up the word, I don't know if it said town or vibe, and then right next to it said cultural diversity. So was it, there's some people that think they were doing things wrong from that regard, or they don't like the old-timey small-town feel, or is it?
No, I think that a theme was having a small-town feel, but that doesn't necessarily mean small-town. I think there's a distinction there. I think folks really like the, you know, running into their neighbors, going to the coffee shop, and, you know, hanging out, seeing people they know. So I think that's the vibe that people like, regardless of the height of buildings or, you know, which way the streets are directed. You know, I think that's, there's a lot of folks that love Dana Point, and they love the heart of it. And that small-town feel came up a lot, but not necessarily in a very literal, physical way.
Yeah, I got you. Not Mayberry.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I know this is receiving files. I just want to make sure, because I heard you say that like the Planning Commission made some inputs and changed some of the language. Our staff, are we comfortable with the framework for each of the elements of the General Plan and the mission statement? For the vision statement, whatever it is?
Yes, that's the recommendation from staff, and the crux of it is the vision statement that is going to be brought forward. So if the City Council is happy with that, then we feel that's going to be a good tool to use.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Gabbard?
Yeah, I just want to thank everyone for all the hard work you've done thus far. I know it's a labor of love for all of you, but, you know, we could spend the next three years, three hours talking about planning stuff. But for the sake of my colleagues, I'll keep it brief. I just want to say thank you for everything you guys have done thus far, and I look forward to the next phase of the process. So thank you.
Thank you.
Agreed. Very professional and well-done. Okay, on to, thank you very much, on to new business, again, Plan Dana Point.
I wanted to say it's been an honor to work on this phase, just real quickly. And to work with you and the community and all the folks involved, very professional. A lot of great spirit and heart went into it, so just a quick thank you.
No, thank you. Alrighty. New business, item number 16, again, the same topic, Plan Dana Point, scope of work for the next phase of the comprehensive General Plan Update. Our request for proposals, Ms. Dynas.
Thank you, Mayor Frost, and City Council, Belinda Dynas, Principal Planner, and we are flying by and preparing for takeoff into the next phase for Plan Dana Point. It is my pleasure to introduce the Dana Point General Plan Update, scope of work for Phase Two Plan Development. As summarized in the last item. Here we are. Sorry about that. As summarized in the last item, Phase One Visioning is wrapping up after several months of community engagement through completion of a communications plan, public outreach program, data collection, and visioning. As a result of the visioning and input received, City Staff has begun scoping the project for the next phase. Phase Two Plan Development involves drafting the Plan Update, environmental review, public review, and ultimately approvals of all amendments. The General Plan consists of multiple elements, some of which are state-mandated and some are optional, three of which make up the certified land use plan of the city's local coastal program. With housing and public safety recently adopted last year, the remaining elements are still over 30 years old and in need of updates. As we stroll right through this planning process, we're looking to check in and obtain City Council input to confirm the scope of work for Phase Two. We've prepared a Request for Proposals, or RFP, and to initiate that selection process for the best qualified consultant team to assist with the successful execution of the Plan Update. The RFP schedule is tentative at this time and has yet to be determined by City Staff, primarily because we want to offer sufficient timeframe for the selection process, which involves proposal reviews, interviews, and negotiations. The General Plan Update Reserve Fund balance maintains little over $700,000, though tonight's item does not have any fiscal impact for this initial effort to solicit proposals from consultants. The cost for completing the update will be determined based upon receipt of proposals. Additional funding may be needed to complete the update and will be presented to City Council for consideration with the request to award the contract. Driving right into Plan Development, City Staff seeks Council's confirmation that the draft RFP is on board with intended goals for Phase Two. These draft goals are detailed in the RFP and include the following: Update of land use, circulation, and economic development elements; Review of all the elements and proposed amendments for internal consistency; Evaluate whether to add or eliminate optional elements; Review of the city's existing policy documents, meaningful public outreach; Creation of a user-friendly and innovative document; and lastly, an implementation plan with action items to put the city's policies and objectives into effect. The scope of work involves development of a legally defensible general plan, incorporating best planning practices and the latest state legislation; An environmental impact report, which will serve as the base document for SEQA analysis for all amendments, including the zoning code; A zoning code and zoning map consistency review, as well as technical reports and studies, and expertise in public outreach. Proposals should include a multidisciplinary team with extensive experience in coastal city planning issues, land use, transportation, and environmental. A comprehensive General Plan Update is often a lengthy process, often more than two years. That is complicated with SEQA and, for us, recertification by the Coastal Commission. To address topics important to the community in an efficient way, Staff recommends a timing and approach that prioritizes land use, circulation, and economic development in the first stage, with the second stage updating the remaining elements. Alternatively, we could go for it all at once, though overall, it is anticipated that Phase Two will be completed in approximately two years. In Phase Two Plan Development, we're ready to dig deep and get our hands dirty in the details to bring this General Plan into the 21st century. Staff recommends that the City Council confirm the scope of work to update the General Plan and direct staff to request proposals from qualified planning consultants for Phase Two. It is our goal to return to the City Council with a recommendation for a consultant contract approval in early fall of this year. And I would be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Fantastic job. Madam City Clerk, any public comments on this?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, City Council questions. Councilmember Valar?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Ms. Dynas, what is the vetting process for consultants? If you get 10, if you get 10 answers to your RFPs and 10 different consultants, how do you vet that?
Yes, there's actually a selection process outlined in the RFP itself. We do have a series of reviews of the proposals by different staff members, and there's a rating system involved. From there, we take the top-rated proposals and do in-person interviews of the consultant team. And from there, we will rate and score based on that, combined with the proposal to ultimately recommend a consultant team that would best reflect the city's objectives for this project.
What's the goal of approving the consultant end of the year, in the next 18 months? Like, give me a rough, how long does this, will this process take to vet?
I'm hoping that we can return in the fall.
In the fall, okay. Great, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor Protem?
Thanks. I would hope you guys can return in the fall, too, because my question is, do we think we can get it done in faster than two years? If I said 18 months, what would you need to get it done in 18 months? Could you?
I think if we prioritize, you know, the important elements, which for us is definitely land use and circulation. And we already have a draft that has been recently prepared by City Staff of the economic development element. We can get those done sooner rather than later. And so I think as we see that progress and get that first Stage One done, we can see progress quicker.
I appreciate that. So I like the phased approach. I will ask you, I understand the importance of economic
I will ask you, I understand the importance of economic development, certainly. I wonder, and my interest in time is that we realize that the market or the environment is already here for growth and development in Dana Point, right? We know that people want to redevelop properties here. So we're already behind the, behind the curve by not having a rewritten general plan probably four years ago. Are there any missed opportunities, for example, if we don't front load urban design? If, if redevelopment happens somewhere, do we miss the opportunity to have or prioritize or incentivize pocket parks or the things that people look for? So I, I wonder if the physical environment type stuff maybe shouldn't be front loaded. As important as economic development is, I, I want to make sure that this general plan, because it's going to be on the shelf for 20 years, doesn't miss something that's going to get built next year, right? And we haven't rewritten it yet. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
In the context of that, of that, in, in that context, can you confirm for me, or maybe do you want to go back and relook at that we're prioritizing the right elements and getting those done first? I do, I do think the phasing is great. Please make sure that we get the important stuff done as quickly as possible, so we don't miss any opportunities.
Yes, and to speak to that, the three elements that we had identified was what the community had shared in the visioning process as the most important issues that would need to be resolved. With regard to urban design, I think that will involve more community input in refining that particular chapter, which is also part of the local coastal plan and which would require coastal commission approval. So that particular element I foresee needing more time. And if, if our priorities are land use and circulation, I would recommend that we get those done sooner rather than later.
Would, as far as those priorities, do we need to finalize that phasing and make that determination now? Is it impossible to send out an RFP and asking people to break it out amongst each component? Or does that get too messy?
No, so in the RFP, we have it as options. So we can definitely clarify that in the language that we would like to see a phased approach, but also have the consultants provide us with their expertise in whether or not a comprehensive approach would be appropriate and possible within the two-year timeframe.
Okay, that, actually that makes sense. And only because I was asked actually by multiple groups and Diana did a fantastic job on Phase One. We're going to go ahead and market for the RFP, for our proposals, what, through social media and all our normal methods? Or do we just put it up on the website and you, they, everybody kind of has to know to go look?
We will post it on our website. With this being specific to looking for planning firms with multidisciplinary experience, I have a very comprehensive list of local and California-based planning firms who specialize in this work and that list is, I want to say over 25. And so from there, we also, you know, get the word out through local organizations like American Planning Association and whatnot. So we can also post the RFP on those types of, of sites as well.
Great, good enough. Thank you. Any further comments? I will go ahead and move the recommended action that we let staff move forward with this RFP. Madam City Clerk, would you take the vote?
Thank you. Councilmember Gabbard?
Yes.
Councilmember Pagano? Councilmember Valar?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Federico?
Yes.
Mayor Frost?
Yes.
That passes 5-0.